I'm not timing it up. It's six thirty. Officially call the Westport Town Council September thirteenth meeting order and we will have pledge allegiance to the.
My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it's a nice hearing. Tonight's council meeting will be divided into two parts. The first part is the budget adoption. And the second part will be the regular town council agenda. So we'll open up the twenty twenty-two budget adoption. Laurie, you got it?
Um, I do not have any comments. If anybody has any questions or comments, this would be the time to speak up. Um, if there's not anything, then I would ask that you, as a council, approve it to be adopted as what is here.
Are there any questions from the floor? There being none, do I have a?
Make a motion.
I will second that, on favor.
Aye.
Aye. The fact I will close the bud twenty twenty-two budget adoption portion and open up the regular town council meeting and that's the approval of the minutes from August ninth council meeting and August tenth public hearing, you, uh, approval of funeral days, payroll vouchers, adjustments, and monthly bills. They were sent out to the town council members, so.
I know additions.
Ready?
Make a motion to approve.
My second bet, on favor, aye. Okay, Rachel, you're up.
You guys have a busy schedule tonight, so I'll be worried. Um, I don't have a ton of the water project, but I do have, um, Division A, our water plant, even finishing up electrical, they're finishing up plumbing, they're finally getting equipment in and they're going to start doing some startup work on what they can do that's not delayed because of the plastic too. So their current substantial completion date is November twelfth, maybe half that, that was the last change order. We do have a new change order tonight for your approval, um, to purchase the new chlorine equipment to go in the new building, um, to do the asphalt work back by the backwash chuben, and then a credit act for a level sensor that you guys got to weekly. So that change order is fifteen thousand five eight five.
Well, there was some contention with the asphalt. How did that work out?
We came to the, the price we ended up agreeing on was much less than the original price. Somewhat of an agreement, and we are going to do this pricing, keep it all the way up past the gate, right, or past that fact.
Is that over the dam?
Yeah.
Is there anything new or just the dam?
Right now, it's just, uh.
Um, there, there was a concern on timing was, uh, if that actually already cleaned out, they won't wait till after that done, do the paving, uh, but they don't want to get pushed into cold weather.
I put a ball in the middle of the day for a, for a solid day, they will be there.
I, I just hope even about that. The price came down to, it ended up being around four grand, I think.
Yeah, forty-six, forty-four is over, I don't know.
We started out much higher.
Yeah, much higher.
Is there any questions on the phone?
We have a pay request from them also, our, our usual monthly pay request. There, financially, there are eighty, it was like complete, which I think is about right, um, both the work that's left is startup work. Finishing purchase, or.
So we're at eighty-five percent completion level now.
I'm not thinking of Division B. Technically, they are past their substantial completion date and I've already given updated schedules from them. There are, they've brought notice. I anticipate they will give us something soon, it's just they are technically past their date. You know, there's a couple of items hanging out there that they can't do until later. I think it's just them getting their paperwork. I anticipate sending them a letter next couple of days and I'll probably. Just a document. Other than that, um, we had a meeting afternoon regarding proportions of that work, county or bank, if you were. Well, I think everybody understands the whole plan. That's all I have. Um, with the exception, I did just want to know. Part of the grant money that we acquired for, or are going to be applying for on the wastewater project with grants through the SRF, they require that utilities attend a, annually have to attend a planning meeting. Somebody attended last year, uh, but then this year for some reason, they can't really add their, any of these planning meetings. They have their new schedule up. We have until, I want to say March, the ten of these meetings and most of them are virtual. Laurie, you might have done it last year, I don't remember. I will get you the website, just, it's just before March, we have to do it, just in case you get.
Who needs to attend that? Just one of them?
Anybody from either the board or the utility that can just say, or what sort of water or wastewater. I would say we probably need to do it for both. Um, I don't know if one person can time for both, maybe just town. I, and if you want, I can send you that website. I just wanted to let, remind you that they did put some new meeting dates. Hopefully they're like quick little one hour meetings, but.
You're gonna make a motion for the change order?
The change order in the past.
Uh, make a motion for, for both.
I'll second that. Motion on favor, aye. And long day for you here. Okay. Next thing we got is setting of Halloween hours. And we are setting it for on a voice vote, or vote, uh, October thirtieth from five to seven P M. That will be Saturday night from five to seven. Last year was till eight o'clock. And after some input from some other people, that, uh, they said they have way too long head short about moving on the streets. No, yeah, five to seven.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. It's been a long day, this is my second meeting today. Well, John makes a motion.
I'll make a motion, that's fine.
I'll second that motion on favor.
Aye.
Aye. So Westport Halloween hours will be October thirtieth from five to seven P M. The lawyers, uh, we did have it at eight and there's, I had some people who was concerned about it and saying, that's getting a little bit like.
Well, it feels good dark.
Out running around the streets that night. Okay. Uh, next is condemned properties on seven oh five East North Street, Foster's, one oh eight South Papa Street, Tollers, three oh eight South Walnut, Griffin, Griffin, and two oh two Northeast Bunny. Do you want to take this one at a time? What's the latest we heard on Foster residence?
At the Foster residence, we had, uh, received a summons regarding the mortgage company because they filed suit and I reached out to them and they stated that they are in the process, but they're waiting on the court. And I'm like, you know. Just going to read you their email. I explained to them that we are condemning the property. They said they would forward that because I reached out to the attorney. Um, their attorney is Manley, Manley Dace Kukowski out of Columbus, Ohio. Um. They're awaiting an affidavit to proceed to judgment. So that was my response back from them. I don't know what that was.
Tell me again.
So we received a summons from the mortgage company saying they had sued, um, the homeowners and I re, I reached out to them to ask them where they were at in the process. I looked it up on Doc's Pop and they had filed the original paperwork on June twenty-seventh. That was all that was in Doc's Pop. And when I re, reached out, they said that they're currently awaiting an affidavit to proceed to judgment. Service has been completed in the case. Can you send me a copy of the condemnation order, which I sent to them? And they said they would send it to their client and its property preservation team and ask them to contact us regarding their intentions.
Okay, so it was the, the attorney representative of the bank?
Yeah.
And the Foster's, are they going through foreclosure right now?
Yes.
That was happening, yeah, that makes sense.
Sounds like they're just waiting for the judgment hearing, like the, the, they've been served.
Right, so it sounds like they're trying to put that process and then help to focus on the property after, I would assume, once they get, once they protect service.
So we kind of put that on hold because we condemned it. It has expired. August fourth was their deadline to clean up the property and they have been no show. I sent, I reached out to them in April and I've got numerous return letters. They've not responded to anything. They've abandoned the property.
We are, I heard a phone tag, but one of the guys has questions on the combination, but, or there comes, I called him back, he's busy.
Is that through the mortgage company?
I, I don't know, it's just, uh, somebody representing, it sounded familiar with the, the law firm issue. Their neighbors want to question that, so, so what, how we, I guess, how we. It's with them or whatever, but then we were just making phone tag and never actually talked again.
Let's see, the attorney that I'm directly communicating with is Nicholas M. Smith out of Columbus, Ohio.
So it sounds like whatever repair department or whatever he refused, referred to as trying to get ahold of David.
I know that, um, oh, a few months ago, I had received a, a question for title search on the property. So I thought maybe they were trying to sell it or something, and I don't know who that was from, just a random titling company, but I never heard any more back from that.
Next is one oh eight South Papa Street, Danny Tollers problem.
That one also expired August fourth. And we had talked at the last meeting about, um, Alex was going to review the case file and see if there was one more step that we needed to file with the court.
Yeah, I have the case file now, I'll look at it, I'll get contact with Laurie, um, and see if there's, if I have any guidance as far as maybe an extra step that we should take. We're maybe ready, like, with the condemnation. I know that at the last, um, council meeting we talked, we discussed, um, rights through, or moving that route. So I'll take a look at it. Laurie has put together, um, files for me on, I think several of these problems, not all of them. So I'll go back to the room and be able to work with Laurie and decide what path to go with.
All right, and the next one on our list is three oh eight South Walnut.
And three oh, three oh eight South Walnut expired September second. Roger has reached out to me a couple of times. Um, in August, he had stated that Daniel Williams was helping him clean up his property, but then he said that the individual stole a bunch of stuff from the property and didn't do what he was supposed to do. Um, then Roger called me last week and said that he talked to S I R P C, the Serpsey that we deal with through Joey Comer and the Grant Riders, and they take care of all the Oka programs and he got himself on a list to possibly apply for a home rehab program in the future. But when I called and verified it was Serpsey, they stated that he is on a list of over twenty individuals and they would not get to him until three years from now. So he is trying his best to do things and I heard today he's down there mowing, um, because I did talk to him about trying to keep the property at least maintained until he gets the house rehab. But that's where he's at in the process. This is the one that caught on fire, so.
This one we went by.
Just quite a bit laid out all over the place the other day, well, the other evening when I was down there. Looks like today, I haven't been down through there.
He was, he smelled everything, he drove out, still out. Thing that's changed was when we went by the day, he was trying to mow, mow around his property.
Did we just turn it over to Alex and move forward? Turn it over.
Yeah, I have the case file, so, I'm going to take a look at, uh, for it and then, um, we can kind of go over there.
Uh, the next one is two oh two Northeast Street.
This is the Methodist Church. They didn't show up for the public hearing. Their deadline was September second as well. And we've not had any contact through the town hall from them, but I have heard rumors that people are sealing up the windows or something on that property, so I don't know.
They've done something and we drove by that today too. But, I don't know, is that styrofoam they put up in there? They try to do something.
Uh, but we've got no response from them.
Mm-mm, I'm not heard from them at all.
With that LLC of Columbus?
They live on Bunton Street.
I, well.
So do we want to move forward with that or are we going to let it? See where the repairs take.
Are you, what do you?
Well, I would say that, um, you know, the council wants for me to go ahead and take the action, whether that's um, having me go ahead and write letters, um, to the owners of these properties, including the LLC. Um, and, and kind of working with Laurie to figure out if we're going to go to a, um, private litigation, then appropriate action would be go ahead and um, move for, um, legal counsel to take the action against, um, these properties. What I would do is I would, this case file was court date with, um, Gloria and then, um, begin initiating the appropriate actions. Escalation forces, we'd be just sending a letter, um, and then kind of going from there.
They get a response from them at least at that point.
Yeah, or, or, or not getting any.
If we're not getting any response, we're getting responses, kind of started that dialogue, I've kind of talked to them to figure out what's going on. Maybe we need to have them come before the board again and kind of give their explanation of what's going on and then we'll figure out how much time it might extend out if we're not receiving any response and, you know, talking to Laurie about those, we would probably need to go ahead and skip that step.
And you've got all the files?
She, yeah, she's put together all the files.
It's not.
It, yeah, it has an expert.
Okay, the, one thing, we're talking silent, let's not be done. Uh, and we drove by shots today. Uh, there's, what can we do about that? We have, how much in the fine, what's in there?
Three thousand three hundred as of September first.
And plus the abandoned vehicles on the fault duty and we need to, we need to do something, move something, and that fine keeps going up and we can't get no response from them at all on the issue.
Yeah, I think that kind of, that kind of leads into, um, the next section, uh, regarding nuisance ordinance. Uh, my recommendation, I know I had sent that to Harry and also to Laurie, is to go ahead and create, um, a ordinance review committee, uh, committee. Um, and one of the responsibilities for anybody to review the current ordinance is figure out what we can do, um, and um, in that committee, we can also discuss some of these, uh, properties that, uh, we want to, uh, take action against. Um, and I think that's one that, uh, we would want to, uh, talk about during those committees. That way we can figure out, um, the appropriate action to take, um, against those particular properties, um, and, uh, bring a recommendation to the, uh, to the council leaders, um, regarding those, those troubled properties.
I, I guess my concern, maybe it's not justified. How high can we run that fine?
It's going to be irresponsible to continue with the fine as high as it is.
Right. You know, you know, they, they don't seem want to do anything about it. And so we've got, we've had towed energy, it was way in town. But with this particular property, it's, it's just continuing to get worse and so in lieu of this won't take time to get the committee together to, you know, look at the nuisance ordinance, what do we do in the intervening?
Yeah, more immediately, um, if, and this is, again, I would say that if you want to take an action, like an action item on the condemned properties, um, you could go ahead and, um, move to, uh, provide these properties, uh, for legal counsel to take legal action on. And I think that's another one that I'm, I'm pretty sure that I have the case file for that property, so I'm going to be reviewing that one too. Um, and so, um, I'm, I'm going to follow the same process, I'm going to follow these properties that are on the agenda, uh, with that particular property that you mentioned, Eric.
My thought also is that right now they're not taking it seriously, but once that fine shows up on their property taxes, which will more than likely hit on the January taxes, that will have a bigger impact on their cooperation. It's just, do we continue it running the whole time? Do we keep tabbing it up? Because twenty-five dollars a day adds up.
I would say the answer to that is yes. Um, you know, the, I have to go back and look at the state statute, but I think, um, there is a limit to the amount, and I think it's like seventy-five hundred dollars.
Was it really is?
It's some, it's somewhere in that ballpark, um, but I think it's, um, I, I, that's my recollection.
Seventy-five hundred. Okay, I, I didn't know what it was and I was, when I was talking to Laurie, I thought, well, if there's a point it it'd come under the court proceeding, it's, it's going to assess a fine, so I didn't know how high we could go. So now we know seventy-five hundred. Okay, that takes care of it. And the next thing we, we touched on it a little bit, uh, was the nuisance ordinance on the up name.
Do you want to go ahead and take action then on the condemned properties? Go ahead and make a formal motion, um, to assign that, um, to the political action?
Now I make a motion to assign those properties to legal action.
I'll second that, on favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on, on the nuisance ordinance. Uh, you, you've given this on there. Uh, okay, traffic court. Well, I looked at that, Alex. And is it feasible for a town our size to do something like that? When I saw the, uh, you know, judge or prosecutor, uh, court staff and all that, how in the world would we do something like that?
Also noticed that we could reach an agreement with an adjacent town or court system, so is it possible to work out something with the new magistrate and to care of him?
I think, I think that's a good, uh, point. I don't know, um, so we would, um, we, we would need to work out an interlocal agreements with another, um, municipality that has created a similar, uh, court. So, um, if you were, if you were looking at the magistrate, I imagine that that magistrate is, um, is under this, under the state statute and is created either by, um, county ordinance or is, um, under the state plan. So what we would need to do is actually locate, uh, within, uh, the judicial circuit, twenty-first judicial circuit, which is like, uh, James County, Jackson, Barthol and New, and see if there's a town or city court, um, in any of those, um, counties. And if there is, uh, we can reach out to them and determine if we can, uh, reach an interlocal agreement with them to kind of share those resources and see if we can reach some sort of economies of scale, um, with, you know, trying to, uh, run, to, to um, have our cases heard, um, as well as their cases in that same court. Uh, but that is, that's certainly, uh, a way to do that. I suppose another way to do that would be to locate, uh, talk to other towns that are in that same, um, judicial area, um, and see if there's any interest to kind of work together to create um, a town courts, um, in Westport and they would maybe be able to share some of those, um, costs with us or to create that.
I just, when I looked at that, it was kind of overwhelming because it's all five-point committee and then what do we have to pass by?
It's got to be a year before the appointment of the court.
Yeah, I think, I think if I read the email correctly, there's something that had to pass before January.
Twenty twenty, uh, yeah, so, um, the, um, first election that we'd be able to do, this would be November of two thousand twenty-three. Um, and so, um, the, the, that judge, um, the town court judge would start then in January of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and so if I'm, um, looking at the or, the statute correctly, we would need to pass, um, our ordinance creating the town court by December of twenty twenty-two.
Or by, so we have a year.
Yeah, so we have about, we have a little over a year. Um, if we wanted to create a, a study committee to kind of take a look at that and figure out, are there um, town courts, um, you know, that are nearby or within that same judicial circuit? So I think I put it in, in here, but it's Barthol, New Brown, Decatur, Jackson and Jennings. Um, and I, I kind of talked to a couple of the older attorneys in my office, see if they, uh, you know, they remember having more town courts kind of in the area, but some of those town courts turned into superior courts. Uh, because, um, they grew to be large enough to accommodate another superior court. And then instead of the county paying for that town court, they were able to make that in a state court and the state didn't pick up the tab for that court. So like our long case, number two, is a good example. That was a town court for years, or a city court. And then when, uh, Columbus pretty large enough to have a third court, if we give, trans, transition from that county or city court um, over to a state, uh, court, a general jurisdiction. Uh, so I think that's happened in a lot of, in a lot of the, uh, these counties. Um, they grow large enough to have these other courts, but, um, I, I would say, you know, putting together, um, a, uh, study committee to kind of figure out what are the costs associated with that, you know, reaching out to, you know, Franklin City Court or reaching out to, um, some of the other, um, city courts that are within uh, South Central Indiana to figure out how much does that cost? Uh, the costs, um, may be, um, more than, um, Westport wants to take on, uh, but right now I don't know that we necessarily know what those costs really are.
No.
Nor are those, um, are those positions, part-time positions? What would be the, um, going rates, uh, for instance, for, uh, a, uh, a, a town court judge, um, what kind of equipment would we need to have, you know, are there systems and, um, and applications and different things that we would need to, you know, download, pay for and maintain, um, you know, and, uh, all of those things, I think at this point, uh, when I, when I put the email together, I was just kind of thinking for the, the top three things that I could think of. But surely there are other considerations that we could think of, and certainly, um, reaching out also to, um, the Decatur County Government, you know, because right now, all of those, uh, driving against it are going over to, uh, you know, Decatur Circuit or superior courts, um, and even the infraction cases, uh, but, you know, if we, if we move to take legal action, we'll be filing those over there as well. Uh, and so they're talking to, uh, the prosecutor's office and talking to, um, the, the official system to get their uh, take on it, uh, with the ordinance. Obviously, we would be having a municipal election, we'd be using the municipal, uh, statute for municipal election. So we would also want to coordinate with the, um, clerk's office over there, um, for Decatur County as well. Uh, so there are several moving pieces to this side, you know, having, um, a study committee where you have several people that are looking at the same issue from maybe different perspectives. Uh, and, uh, you know, willing to reach out to the, um, town courts and, uh, see what they did to get things off the ground, maybe stick people that are still in those systems that remember getting that started and how much all that costs and what it costs to maintain it. I think those are, uh, good questions, um, to ask. In addition, you know, finding out who else is doing that in the area and see if maybe, if they're already doing everything or something, so if they're open for it to share.
Yeah, look, then, oh, good. But it's something that's been talked about for years and we really didn't know, uh, if it was feasible or, or even out of all that, and that's why this is kind of explored.
But the, I think the, maybe encouraging to that, if that is something Westport wants to do is that, uh, you know, uh, my reading of the statute and that particular section, we don't need to go to the Indiana Supreme Court. Uh, it is something that Westport would pass as an ordinance. Um, it's just that it has very specific timing, because it's on one of the, that's. Um, and, uh, because it's not a, a state court, it would be something that, that Westport would have to pay for if we wanted to create that. Uh, I don't, I don't know that it's necessarily as bureaucratic as originally envisioned to start it. It's just, we don't know how much that might cost.
Yeah, right. Okay, next on the, Jen, then Dolores, you're up.
All right. Did we mean to skip the rental inspection?
Yes. Yeah.
All right. First barrels, what's the, what's the yes, no one? Can you do it? Can you not?
Or in state statute, you're not allowed to burn anything that's on that natural material. So if it's not a natural material, which pretty self-explanatory.
Some wood, cardboard.
Wood leaves, construction materials are, don't fall under that classification because they're treated.
They clean back. It technically is actually illegal for us to, because that'd be newspapers.
Well, I don't really object to it. I just don't like the smell of it. Per se, but I, I just thought at one point in time we outlawed them or did away with them.
It's a state statute. So, so you're not allowed to burn your trash by state statute? Has nothing to do with local municipality? Correct. Well, the process would be to contact, um, non-emergency line and report an illegal burn to the fire department for them to go check out.
Okay. I'll do that. I just, you know.
And they're the ones that, that fall under the enforcement as well.
Yeah, you can tell truly none of you of this is self-managed property and if you will, it will not properly.
Right, Dolores, that's why people keep having that kind of attitude that's, it takes a lot of more ordinances. Which, well, we kind of don't want to get into, but.
Clean sheets don't like work though.
Well, I'm sure they don't. Then what can I do with neighbors? You got your sheets out, they're going to burn when the sheets are burnt.
Yeah, he did it on purpose. He knew what he was doing. But I, you know, I didn't know because you just, you know, you, you go around town and, and you see all, everybody, I mean, there's a couple of people re-bottling and you go, when I'm rolling, you'll go there. And, you know, and they're just throwing all their insulation, they're throwing everything in these barrels and they're burning it, you know?
Common sense to take out burned trash, I mean, plastic insulation. You know, if it won't burn up and go away, it doesn't stand for, for the environment. I think you have enough sense on that.
But then obviously.
I have kids in, remind you that you can't burn up a lot of it.
There's a couple of them.
Oh, okay.
That's the only thing.
And I'm burning plastic.
And I forgot to get burned after ten a morning. Dolores, the only thing we have in town, I think, uh, Gloria told me, we, you can't burn after ten o'clock.
Because it's supposed to. Because it's already a state statute, so you don't have to have, it's still state law.
Just go pour water on it.
So when I golf cart around, I don't care. Don't encourage me, Gloria, don't encourage me.
I, I, I hope Dolores answers.
Yeah, he does. It does.
All right, Troy.
Never been to this before.
No, no, that's working for him.
So, uh, I'm in the process of wanting to build a larger garage on my property. In order to do it the way that I'd like, I need to get a variance from the Decatur County Area Plan Commission. And I've started the whole process of doing all that. And before I actually go to my meeting, they would like for me to get a piece of paper, which I've already, which if I could show it to you.
Sure.
Um, basically saying that the town council Westport does have a property with my proposed setbacks. So currently the zoning for R two, which is that property, nine oh five, and the state road three, which is directly across from COVID. Um, you're supposed to be eight feet away on sides and fifteen feet away from the back. And the way that I would, the current building is twenty-one by twenty-two, and I would like to tear that down and replace it with a larger forty by forty-eight building. And I would want it to be within four feet of the side and two feet in the back.
Is this the backside of Catherine Circle?
Yes, it is. This is Kevin Cullen's property and Jonathan Orr, who both told me that they would sign something saying they have a problem. Right. And I had everybody come out and mark my lines. That way I know that I'm not anywhere near utilities or anything like that. So basically that's building in there would be another two foot further back. Because I'd like to get my forty foot in there.
Okay, so usually at two feet backside, the rest is coming up to the front of the property.
My variance for the back would be two feet away from my property, basically. According to the R two zoning, you're supposed to be fifteen feet away from it. So I'm applying for the variance to be up to two feet away from it.
You're, regardless of what we do, you'll still have to get the signature.
Right, and, and I've already been to the courthouse and they've said all that and everything. They just, before I even start the process of
I just want everybody else to know that we can't just trump whatever the other.
Right, say, right. And they said they have to mail out questionnaires or whatever to the adjacent property owners. Once I start that process with them, but they said before I even did that, they wanted to see something from the town council saying that they did, that Westport didn't have a problem. I kind of, myself, I don't know, if you guys want to, I think that would suffice what they're asking for me.
And you know, I think they'll, they will have the, uh, fix, I think we have ordinance for it. Which I'm not opposed, I mean, I don't care if you go a hundred by hundred, but I just think, would, would we need to fix that or?
Well, with what was built over on Paul Street, it'd be my guess that's not an ordinance.
Plus the dance that there's, I mean, that's probably eighty-five hundred days worth of.
I, I'm pretty sure, I don't, I don't care. I'm just, I think, uh, I, I think we've done it so far.
Is that with the county ordinances? Because if so, they may.
I always started my, or, put into my remittances.
News to me, I didn't know it.
You know, if that's a Westport town ordinance, or you know, that's, uh, that's, that's a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know.
I can't remember them all, so I don't know.
Because we ended up, I'm on Paul Street, it's thirty-sixty? This is one of Paul Street's, like a thirty-sixty here.
Yeah, no, I don't care how big one can be, I was.
Are we going against our?
Yeah, we just need to make sure we fix that before we do the, I don't care how big it is. I'd love to have, you know, a hundred by hundred, but hell.
When, when are you planning on building?
Soon as I get my variances, I'm when the lumber prices plummeted here as of late, so.
Troy, when do you have, do you have a hearing yet for?
No, I, um, the, as soon as that I can get up there for that, it'll be the first Wednesday of November, because I have to have this turned in by the first Wednesday of October to get on the following month's meeting.
I think we can make a motion.
I make a motion pending review of the ordinance. You know, I think that'd be fun.
Yeah, we, we can, we can, everybody's okay with it. What we can do is, uh, if the council and client grant that fifth review, um, that could be the decision and then Gloria could make a copy of what is, um, provided there. Once, uh, the ordinance is to figure out whether there's ordinance that would, uh, prevent your requests, um, if, if there is an ordinance, then go ahead and sign that if that's what the council wants to do.
Yeah, okay.
I'll say that on favor, aye.
So.
We can keep these. Times this, or, um, I think that's a copy. Sorry. Yeah, that, that is a copy, so.
Okay, yeah. So we just put that together, so.
Yeah, well, and, and then did you leave, Gloria?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't put my contact information or anything on it. Put it on the other page.
Yes. Cause we'll have to look, it's new to me, and that goes back, why we need, we need. I didn't know anything about that. We need to review it and find out. Then we'll get, we'll get digging into this ASAP on that, I'll pull you up, so. Best thing, we need to verify because we can't go against ordinance. We need to amend and change the ordinance. If, anything else.
So, so just to clarify, if, if there was an ordinance against that, is there still a possibility that that could be changed or? Is it made or something?
It's possibly.
It would just take us longer than your.
Right, yeah, yeah. I don't give up hope on, we just need to check and verify that, make sure. Okay, next is ordinance nineteen ninety-eight dash two, noxious weed test. In, in town, why are we bringing this up? In town, we have agricultural area. So how is that defined and what constitutes noxious weeds, what constitutes pasture, how high is a pasture? That's what we are looking into.
I think we already looked at that portion of the ordinance, certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah, why, how, how do we, how do we handle this?
Yeah, Gloria provided the ordinance to me. I took a look at it. There are several undefined terms in the ordinance. Um, I think that, um, if, if the council wants to create an ordinance from the committee, which, uh, is a, is a good tool, um, to clean up the ordinance. That way we can locate some of these, uh, ordinance much more quickly. Um, and then, uh, on, on that particular ordinance, I would recommend, uh, you know, re- redrafting that and defining some of those terms, um, just so that everybody understands what the ordinance, uh, does say, what it prohibits, um, and, um, it would then allow, uh, for that ordinance to be much more easily enforced. Uh, so that would be my recommendation regarding, um, the, uh, both the, the nuisance ordinance and the noxious weeds, I would recommend that the city council create a, a, an ordinance or a legal um, so that these items can be reviewed and quantify some of these ordinances.
Okay, with that noxious weed and all that go in under the nuisance ordinance? Is that what you're saying?
Potentially. Um, another thing from this, for instance, we have, um, I think there's a provision that says that, uh, maintaining, you know, noxious weeds, um, is declared a public nuisance. Um, so if it's determined that your property, um, has, you know, weeds that are certain height, so like defining what, what a noxious weed is, for instance, the state has, the state statute is listed out what those, uh, are. And so oftentimes prefer incorporating this by reference with NRO, um, local ordinance is a good idea, but then kind of defining like a height requirement for that. And if you're going to have carve-outs for like pasture or agricultural land, you know, clearly defining what that means, um, so that, um, you know, um, an individual property or could just claim that their property was, uh, pasture, for instance, and then, um, did it not have to maintain it? Right now, that may be a plausible offense, uh, but it may not be agreed with, defined in a way that, uh, that clearly based what is permissible or what's not permissible. Or maybe you can remove that term altogether.
So, under nu- nuisance ordinance, would that include like, okay, just questioning and what's, we can't enforce it right now, because we don't intend to enforce like, okay, it, it's one AM in the morning and you've got your stereo blasting. And is that falls under the nuisance ordinance as well? Is that a different ordinance?
So noise is always going to be tough because it's, you know, when we're talking about like noxious weeds, that's something we can quantify. Is it of the type that we're talking about? You know, or is the grass too tall or something like that? Um, you know, I know that, um, I've worked on trying to, uh, get the sound rights. You could buy, um, the, you know, yeah, you can, you can buy the meters that are attached to this, it's usually expensive, um, to, to get one that actually registers all of that appropriately, um, and, you know, uh, you know, oftentimes that discussion gets into, you know, offensive, but that's subjective, that's hard to, uh, you know, flipping against somebody else, maybe against another person. Um, but one of the things that you can look at is more general, like nuisance ordinance, um, in that term, in that realm, which is that, you know, if somebody's maintaining their property in a way or behaving on their property in a certain way that is denying the ability for their neighbors to use and enjoy their own property in a way that they want to. And that can present itself as a nuisance. Um, so having a more general nuisance ordinance, you know, but in those cases, usually what you're going to want to do is have affidavits signed, uh, by, under oath by the different neighbors saying, here's what's happening on this property. Um, and the way that they're maintaining their property is, um, denying me my ability to exploit my own property and therefore it's public nuisance. So that's a, that's a good way to word that public nuisance ordinance, um, is, is exactly like that, to sort of lay out what the elements of the nuisance are. Um, and it could, could be very well leaked that, uh, that proved. So I know, um, I had a hearing probably a month ago in, uh, Bartholomew Brown case number two. And the allegation was that this person was maintaining their property in such a way that basically it was caused by infestations, um, on, on neighboring properties. So the neighbors basically put together affidavits and we had their bills for, uh, humiliation. Um, and, and we had pictures of the backyard, that there was fecal matter just standing in the backyard, um, and, uh, you know, there's quite a bit of evidence that, uh, because of the way this person was maintaining their property, the neighbor, she couldn't use her pool area because of the smells that emanated from that property. So, you know, the way, if somebody's maintaining their property in a way that's, uh, it's causing smells that then, um, emanated to another person's property or there's noises or music, um, that's doing the same thing. Uh, at that point, you know, we could put together an ordinance that may be able to address that. Uh, but the neighbors would need to, um, you know, basically state that the way that their property, that the other person is maintaining their property is denying their, whether or not.
Yeah, that makes sense. I was looking at it from, I know well, the complaints that we get sometimes is like, okay, the fireworks time and this sets a set of time, okay, and we're shooting a month later, it scared my dog and, you know, and alcohol and all that stuff.
That's, uh, state law as well. That's already put under state.
Or if there's property signs on the highway that says honk if you're happy, or honk if you want us to drink and it's one AM. We've got complaints about that.
Yeah. Do we have an ordinance that addresses, um, fireworks? Uh, because that's one thing that we looked at recently, uh, is, you know, the state statute carves out which, basically which states, local municipalities cannot, uh, regulate. And so, you know, fourth of July, here's, um, Christmas, I think, as the Year's Eve, uh, fourth of July, maybe another one. But basically it says that the cities don't have the ability to regulate the spaces. Um, and so, you know, one of the ordinance I know from this past, uh, is basically if it's not within those particular protected areas, it's prohibited within the city. And so that's one way to do that. That's something that's, uh, Westport wants to look at is, um, creating a, um, a town ordinance that prohibits the use of fireworks outside of those, um, specifically carved out areas under the Uh prohibits the use of fireworks outside of those um specifically uh carved out areas under the state statute.
I I just didn't know and Damon and I think, and you can correct me on this too, I think, well, you guys get noise complaints from. People playing the music too, oh what?
Yeah, well, we get it. It's it's like uh musical or anything, fireworks, we don't have a big problem. Every now and then somebody lets them off, but it's uh, it's not a big problem. I said, it's basically like, dogs barking all night long, like music, you know, midnight player. Something like that.
But it's not an ethical warrant. I mean, when you go talk to them and they kind of quiet down and this is.
I mean, most of the time they do. I mean, yeah, but uh. I feel it would be nice to having the worst order for sure.
Okay.
Couple of years ago, we had that ongoing situation where somebody had a bunch of dogs in their backyard and they were barking all night and. They were barking during the day and people couldn't sleep, stuff like that. It has come up often on.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'll move on. We we just didn't know, we constantly, we didn't know our latitude of, well, you don't be too restricted, but at the same time, people have the right to enjoy their property. And if I got a dog barking all night long. Um, that's, and I'm trying to get, you know, a shift worker, get some sleep, that's not conducive to my. Hell for my attitude. Okay, uh, next thing that we've got on here is a scheduled fall cleanup for the dumpster. I talked with Gloria on that and if it's acceptable, we will do October the twenty first, which is on Thursday. Uh, we have two dumpsters out here. Uh, set where we have before for twenty one. Because what we're trying to do is we'll have a spring cleanup starting in April, the two dumpsters out here, and then we'll have a fall cleanup with two dumpsters. We're going to try to do that every year. So do I have a motion from the floor?
I'll make a motion.
Uh, we'll say that on favor, all right? Okay, the next thing we got on here is Main Street press here.
I'll let Damon.
I guess we need to decide what we want to do. Uh, the problem we're at is people are misusing. There for a while was, uh, I had to give these CCs them. We were cleaning out, now it's going to the dog. And it's just disgusting. It's uh, they're not being used for people picking trash up on the street or, you know, eating ice cream whenever they're stopping to clean their cars out in there. Uh, the departments here are are filling them up with their home trash along with the church's dumpster, you know, if they fry it up and use it. So I hopefully just need to decide to relocate them or somebody else that care them or just take them out or something. Because the only one that really even gets full and actually used correctly, I feel, is the one in front of Pizza Delicious. That people come down, they're standing around, they're short of their angle, but I have no problem. That's what they're for, that. I personally am just not willing to clean up all CCs or just have their misuse.
What happened to that one over by the pocket park? It's totally gone.
Well, two of them's gone. We took this one out, so it was the one that was misused the most and the other got hit by a car.
Oh, cool.
It's a week, we, it's fixed. We just haven't put it back out, but that was another one. That one's getting misused as well as we left it out. I guess we just need to decide what we want to do.
Versus throwing that stuff away. Looks like throwing away, I guess.
Why are they? To know, because they might hear, I, you know, I, I take my own dog down to the creek, so I don't have to clean it. I need somebody else to help that. It's, I'm not doing it. So I don't know if we want to maybe relocate them in town and leave the ones that are being used correctly where they're at or take them out. I don't know. That's up to.
They're liners to them? They're liners to them, so.
Yeah, they're metal liners. They they don't drain or nothing. When they get full rainwater or all the water that's in there, it's 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 in there.
But there's trash bags in there.
Yeah, there's trash bags in them, but even because somebody mentioned, once you put poles and trash can, well, or the trash bag, well, it's fine. But then you got to, they don't think it's in the can, because the cans don't drain. The cans are solid. Um, so I don't know. We just need to decide something with them.
These are my own thoughts, John, this. Not make necessarily make a decision this evening and then. Research and say that with Damon and really look at it and get the facts and everything, what's going on. I I did have to, I think it was just tongue in cheek or maybe I got a different kind of humor. Uh, one of the people that got, who was talked to about quitting that. Uh, he took his dog and relieved himself, someone down on the Baptist Church property, so I don't know if that cured the problem or not, though I kind of had. Kind of chuckled about it, saying, don't throw your trash down there, which one had, there's dog leaving himself down there and walked away from it, so. He's just moving around to different properties, I suppose, but it it would be nice if people cleaned up their own, walked the dog and cleaned it up, some do milk smell.
Only one person I know.
Yeah.
All mark.
Yeah. It's it's a pressure, she she is.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, she does. She does. She's a model for cleaning up and she walks those dogs all the time.
I was thinking of those dogs.
I thought one guy.
There's a state statute for picking up your dog waste, isn't there?
Well.
My wife works in those lotteries.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's getting to the point. Here, here, here again, people aren't being considered to let people's property and they let the dog. Defecate and everything happens and then walk off. I I don't like that myself. I think our own dog.
They take it off his property and bring it over mine.
Yeah, and brings it over there. But anyway, that's a majority issue.
Don't anymore.
All right, but we'll look into that, see what's, get some in the books.
Well, number one, the city doesn't have an appropriate vehicle to be carrying. It's a waste, especially at that point. Uh, do we want to? Yeah, I mean, do we want to dedicate the manpower? I mean. We accepted this as a, as a helpful thing and it's not turned into something that's being helped, so.
Just then, what you said, just, what about the one over there by Coles? Is that still over there or?
Uh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chris.
Quarter of bars, but one in front of Pizza Delicious. We have one there by Dave's.
What about, what about one of my bars? Is that a problem?
That's the one that was a problem. That that problem didn't resolve.
That was the guy.
Yeah, he was living in the garage. He was stuffing all his human pieces.
Really? And that's been.
How he's gone.
Yeah, he's gone now. I mean, the only other problem to have as far as humans is somebody likes to fill them up with their diapers. Not, not that they care, but somebody is stopping and filling them up with, you know, just baby diapers and I don't know who's doing it, but that's what's in it. We change it. I don't think that's the intention for the, you know, for the, for the trash. I'm not your household trash. Like I said, walking out of this, you're going to go where you got plastic. The one side's supposed to be recycling, which nobody uses. So maybe maybe just throw the trash in both of them, which is a problem. Obviously, we don't sort of. Uh, as I said, would be an issue if they were using correctly, it's just not. That's the problem or not. Taking on people's household trash. I just don't think that's. Record issues or our responsibility to go here and people's trash or hope.
I agree.
What about just moving around? It's used on spot.
Yeah, the the way I look at people's home misuse, they're home misuse. I mean, as a guy who walks out, those trash on the ground, I don't care if it's two foot trash cans still on the ground. Same way a cigarette, let's go. You you got the people who smoke, it will use the the butt over the loop and stay right beside them. There's still a little green. Yep. Uh, and I I don't know where else we can put them. We don't have, obviously, the best sidewalks in town, uh. I mean, Baby's has trash cans, you know, with their customers, uh.
Sanders does.
You know, Sanders does, so I don't know where else to put them without somebody vandalizing them. Tear them, you know, finish tearing them up. That kind of huge problem. We don't vandalize there now.
Go to Super Logical Place would be Pizza Delicious.
Yeah, I mean, I said that one usually. Correctly. Full of delicious trash, but at least it's not on the ground.
But Pizza Delicious, the trash cans okay.
Yeah, we don't, I said, we we change that one quite often because it's a full plate, but.
So the one we've got is one, this one been down here from the post office down, right?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Shoot that.
All right. Post office down, those bowl, I have one of these, where's the one Pizza Delicious at?
Just right.
Right out front and then bars is just fine. And that's on the corner. Didn't we have one, did we just have one across from Dave's gas station on that corner?
There's one there.
It's still there. There's no problem.
It's okay. I mean, they use that one for their dog, but not, they're not like filled it up like the other one.
We go three.
That that one's it. That that one's just, it's been a whole week since.
And when you said the dogs were banging their dog.
Both. Some others. They they was actually. They they pull the sidewalk, they just leave. Then they started going down those side building, now they're using.
Yeah, that's good.
The church law is, you walk up there, be careful.
Yeah, that's cool. Yeah, we might, I mean, we can make the adjustment to maintain the ones up there, yeah.
Oh.
It was nice having one at the the park or what the CD, what what you call.
Pocket park.
Yeah, I mean, I say we're going to be honest.
So maintain one pocket park in Pizza Delicious.
Okay, then we do this, the one that was sitting on the corner. That we had over here that sat in trouble with taking pole that one and move that one over to the, what'd you say, pocket park?
I think bars.
Where the gazebo was.
Where the gazebo was.
And taking that can, trash and moving it over there, right?
A big hole.
I'll say that.
That's the one over there, but think the ones in there, they don't count.
All in favor, all right? That motion clear as mud?
Yeah, sure. Yes, it's not a smile. It'll be.
We've had our town attorney here almost all day long. We had two o'clock meeting. That lasted for a while, then I took a tour of the town and then we stayed, so we. I don't know.
We did it.
We did.
Very good, yeah. So.
Okay.
No, Main Street.
That's clear as mud, Damon.
Main Street.
Main Street, oh yes, I'm sorry. Here, you want to throw this hammer, I forgot you. Main Street, go ahead.
We just was wanting to request a uh road closure for the fall festival. We just need Main Street. Like in front of the community building. Here's our parade route that starts at the fire station. Goes to the community building. So we need, it's the same route as what we did two years ago. So we just need like Main Street block off pretty much all day from like Williamson to to me. That one, and then from uh Main Street Williamson, we need just like a block down because we have um a horse. That has a covered wagon or like a covered wagon that's going to be giving rides, so we need that kind of open to where you can see like traffic coming out.
What side of Williams?
Um.
Mulberry.
South side.
Where we have like the trolley that side, like the behind the shelter house.
So. I mean.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah, south of Main Street, east part.
Yeah. And just a block down. We did that where at Christmas time, we had Charlie rides, so they walk down.
Did you block it down to uh to where Sycamore comes out?
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then um, I'll just get with like Damon and Joe and all of them and figure out, we'll have to block off a couple of the side street. Just as the parade goes by, so where they're not crossing roads, but we did that two years ago, right over there and. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll say that motion on favor, uh.
Thank you.
Problem. Anyway, I want to appreciate you coming for the town council, inviting the snow, the dates and the times and. And uh, now I was saying, that first block over, oh, by the way, we're going to have a party.
We've never done that.
I know you have.
Did you have something else?
No.
Okay.
What is the phone? I'll tip it on the line.
Okay, I will throw it open to the floor.
Hi, I'm, I was requesting a uh adjustment on the water. On July first, July seventh, I purchased a water heater. And my water bill stays between one eighteen and one thirty three in August. It was two hundred and seventy dollars. And I mean, I I got, where I purchased water here, I got a loan from the bank with the water here, they're saying that I didn't use it. This is the first time my water bill has ever been signed.
Um, we have guidance through our ordinance that says what qualifies for leak adjustment and you have to use over, I think it's. Jenny would know for sure, but I think it's over twelve hundred gallons over your normal consumption. And they did not use that. It did not qualify. Their bill was around a hundred and thirty dollars. And when we look at their average usages, about that every month anyway, so um they did not qualify under our ordinance and what we require as a leak adjustment. So I I did tell Rita she could come and petition you guys if she disagreed because she talked to me a few times about it, Jenny talked to her about it. Keisha explained it to her that she just, she did not qualify.
Yeah, I've been there for like seven years. This is the highest it's ever been.
Let me see your pay for it.
Your summer usage span, where you get a little bit of this town for. Going to school or work hard. Your summer usage.
I don't believe so.
Well, you get one adjustment a year, it's just two months. It's got to qualify with that. It's got to be a lease.
Yeah.
There's her first bill, there's one past. Um, her, I had to have to pull it up and show you, but her average is, like she said, around a hundred and thirty, so.
It's a hundred dollars over.
No, no, it was, it was like five dollars over.
Um, I guess sometimes.
Cause that's two, that's two months' bill that you're saving. That's because you didn't pay your previous bill. Or that's two months' worth.
So it did, it did.
I mean, it just didn't need, she didn't have enough to qualify or anything unless she wanted, just there was some kind of discount or something.
What was I saying here, Alex? They knocked the.
Is your labor board, or was the board yourself?
Yeah, I mean, you could do this to Mary McColl and say, hey, hey, my bill.
I mean, actually, she, she actually, I forget the month, but she took off my rent that she won't um do anything with water and it's paid for. I just. I just, like I needed, maybe I'm misunderstanding my bill, but I guess because.
I know Jenny and Keisha both explained it to you.
So it's a cumulative total here, so so this is the 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 previous and then with the added. Over there, that's what's making this, that, that amount. So it wasn't this all in, all in a thirty day billing period. Okay.
Okay.
Very. And if you work for the board.
She's married.
Right, so I should get a few borners and I'll agree with what Gloria said. It's a, that's not a version.
Yeah, um, I do have one other thing right behind my house. A big house right behind. I don't, it's smaller than a house, breaks right behind me, big with you on that. I just don't get along, I guess.
Little way around to Main Street.
That's it. Yeah, that big, big house. These people are squirting around. Yes. The people there are putting kitty litter.
Uh, okay, we know.
Yeah, and my dog's getting into it, so and.
Do we know how to. Is that the same? I think it's the same.
That's a different.
This is a different person.
Right.
Oh, gee.
It's, it's, if you go down my alley, it's that alley and she's throwing.
You know.
Those three eleven East.
So it's right behind me. Con, yeah, it's on Main.
She's saying.
All right, we will send them.
Yeah, because my dogs come home sick a couple of times, you know, and I caught her doing it and I'm like, oh, this.
Yeah.
I have cats and I put mine in trash bag, so.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
We'll, we'll send them a ladder about that.
But it's the house on Main Street, though, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one that Ward used to live in, yeah. Three twelve, um, three, three on nine. Three twelve, I think, yeah.
We'll send, we'll send you them.
Okay, three, three on one.
I think it's three twelve. Yeah, it's three eleven.
Woman.
What's going to happen with the sewer? What's going to happen with sewer over the trailer? I'm tired of smelling it all summer.
I don't.
I went to the border of hell, I went everywhere, and they told me to come here. I went to Board of Health, I went everywhere, they told me to come here. We have, I'm here. So why is the water turned back on? That's what I wanna know, we have four little kids living in that trailer and a sewer running underneath it. Why do we have this? You had the water set off and then it almost dried up. So now water's back on and it's running back out onto the street again. So 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 why is it happening now? I have to smell it when I'm out there in my garage. It's been all summer. Why don't you have to clean it up?
I'm not trying to dump it on you, what what can we say?
Can't come, keep the water shut off until they fix it.
Can we shut off water on a family with children?
Yes, you can, it's better for shut the water off than let four kids sit there with shit underneath the trailer.
I agree, I don't know where we stand on a legal standpoint on that, Lori, it's.
Legal hell.
Well.
You're you're destroying four kids' lives.
They're evicted and I think he goes to court with them September twenty eighth, somewhere at the end of the month.
Well, why isn't Black being sued?
Until he goes to court, they're gonna probably stay.
I'm a landlord, if that happened in my house, I'd have been underneath till the next day.
Yeah, well, you're a good landlord, but he's not, I I wanted to talk to him personally.
I have to, trust me, and if I like me and you talking right now.
Pretty much, so when he was emptying out that house and other people's movement. And his reply was, I'll just admit, I said, okay, that doesn't get the problem fixed. But that was it, that's all he said was, so we sent a fine letter. To get all that cleaned up and he's under that.
Just shut the water off, you can't let water run across the damn street.
The problem is, the the property is his, but the water is the family that lives there and we can't penalize.
It's still the same damn thing, y'all don't have to live there, okay? I do, and I have to sit and watch four little kids go in and out of that damn house with shit underneath it. It ain't right.
Then I I would recommend you call CPS, I would recommend you.
They got me going to Miami.
But those are the, tho- those are the people that that we're kinda confined in working with and we're getting about as far as you want.
I I just don't get it, I just don't get it, how how can you let it happen?
We're not allowing it to happen, we we've contacted the proper people. Can't just shut the water off. Do it, if it was that, if it was that simple, we'd shut the water up, but but we can't. They're not, they're they're renters.
It's a trailer crossing me.
I don't think he has one.
Now, now the trailer was sitting there half burnt and, you know, they caught the trailer on fire, whether it's outside of it or on fire. I gotta look at that, once I gotta look at all the crap they got, you were over there, I seen you look at. You know, I gotta, I've been looking at that for two years, two years. And I work my ass off on my property to try to make it look good, and I gotta sit on my front porch and look at that. It's not right.
Well, I'll agree with you a hundred percent, Walter, but I'm at a loss. We can't, if we could go on that property legally and get that fixed, we would have got that fixed, but we can't. We can't, we cannot do that, I don't know how to force. You know, so he is a property owner, he can sue the other property owner deposit that raw sewage.
He certainly could do that, but what I what I would say is some of these things that we're talking about putting together have nuisance or dents. Um, you know, the other thing that I would say is that it sounds like the uh property owner is going through a picture process. But I'm not necessarily hearing, it sounds like there are some issues with the tenants. Uh, but if there are maintenance issues at the trailer that's, you know, maybe that the tenant is. Is pointing at landlord saying, this is something that you should be fixing, um and it's not something that I should be fixing. And if the landlord is saying this is something that that uh you should be fixing, that's almost a um private. Action between the landlord and the tenant.
Right.
Um, but what we're looking, so that's a, that's a, that's in and of itself an issue and something that could create a cause of action. Or the tenant against the landlord saying, you didn't fix this issue that's ongoing at my um property that I'm leasing from you. But that doesn't help him out.
That don't mean it'd be in the near term.
What what could help out is we did have um like a nuisance related ordinance. And we were able to have surrounding property owners essentially indicating that.
But his uncle is part of the property owner, they don't want it.
This property, the way that this property maintained by the landlords is preventing it. But in the near term.
So I and I just thought about it, what if we, and I don't know if we, we've got a number, but what if we contacted. Because they're putting raw sewage in into the water supply and onto the street, so what if we contact IDAM? Yeah, there's a water table right nearby because it goes to the creek.
That's the problem. And and even, we have set up for fines, but again, until he sees those fines, those property taxes a year from now.
Walter, when we talked about, we tried to call IDAM.
And we're gonna pursue one more agency and see if we can't get some relief from them.
And I know, I know this doesn't help you, we will.
So so did you have a contact with them, do you deal with them? I did.
Uh, yeah, just the wastewater.
So you have a contact with them? So we're gonna try another.
I hope this is a person we need, I'm sure they can get us some.
They've been, they've been over there.
Well, I don't think IDAM's been over there.
No, they ain't been there either. Whoever deals with the kids. Yeah, they've been there.
Yeah, we've had the Board of Health call, so what we're gonna try now is we're gonna try IDAM. Um, because they're dumping the sewage within the water table close over there, we're seeing they can't help us with some relief.
When the creek gets up, oh, they should go right out there to the creek.
Yeah, so he's gonna try his contact over IDAM, see what we can, what we can.
I mean, I'm sorry to yell people, but I put up with it all day.
Oh, you're passionate about that, and I was living over there, and I go watch it, and it is wet.
It it definitely wants me to leave Westport, trust me, and it's getting close. If it wasn't for me having to pack up all my stuff and move, I'd already have been gone.
Well, Board of Health has been out. It's.
They they also condemned the property down with the, down the road, still a lot of people moving, so um they're they're not very helping.
I just don't get it.
So so that's another thing, you weren't here at the last meeting, then let's make move on. Uh, that's why we're working on this, so rental inspection requirement, Westport. Is that before you rent something out, you're gonna have to have an inspection and a.
They didn't have to have the trailer, they moved in overnight.
That's what we're gonna do.
And and it was condemned.
That that that's what I was just referencing, that was Board of Health too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, or Al, whatever.
So so we're gonna try the IDAM agency, see if we can't get anything there.
But I I will say one thing, those kids in that, those two guys in that trailer, nicest guy you ever meet, and they grew up in that.
I I I tried to look at every option, if you, we talk about hiring a plumber and his billing him for that. Uh, can't do that, I I don't, we as a town don't have any way to go over there and say, Mr. Black, get over there and fix that.
I'll go burn a fan in it and cut a fire that one night.
Yeah, either that or it takes a big fan out, well, back then.
I'm trying to stay away from these meetings, but. Now I get too upset. Oh, and he's got a dog kennel going over there.
Yeah, that's another thing, how many dogs?
What's he got, eight, no, he's probably got ten or twelve.
Can you have before he qualifies a kennel?
Seven.
How many's he got now?
I don't know, probably ten or twelve, he's got some pups now.
If you go above a certain number that you. I don't remember what it is.
My wife was so upset.
All right, Walter, I know, it's not, if you feel passionate about something, that's fine, Walter, but. The the law and all these.
They gotta be something you can do, you cannot let shit run out in the damn road, come on. I'm gonna build me an outside dog out there and just let it run down the creek.
We're we're gonna pursue another avenue on it. I don't, I don't know why we didn't think about that one before.
And besides the twenty, you're you're getting close to.
They'll probably be the one that will get relief from.
That they're gonna be evicted, so we're running, we're running within that time.
A fa- family with four kids out of there, even after they're victims.
Four days, it's your granted the judgment, it's four days after the judgment generally.
I hope I get stuck with every piece, I hope he leaves everything that's there there, I hope he, they just move out. That's that's my my wish.
I promise.
We do have a place that when when it switches hands, that we do a sewer inspection, so I would say that if they are evicted and. But if Mr. Black wants to come in and turn the water on in his name, we'll need to know that our, the sewer situation is down here.
How can, how can he rent that again? And y'all knowing that this property is is got. Shit underneath it.
He can't rent it again.
Cause that kid's living in there right now, said it was that deep at one time in there.
I I think this, or Lori said, we won't be turning the water back on because.
They have to go in there and clean that all out. Well, they know it, cause they go by there and and uh. He goes by at least once a week, he don't stop anymore, he goes by.
Yeah, I I think that's where we'll be at, at the end of the month, once that family is moved out, we may have more leverage.
It didn't help you immediately, we're just moving as quick as possible, wish I could voice back at one.
I just had to come up and voice my thing. I want it on paper, no, cause I still got the shit there. I bet it does.
The Lord, do you have anything?
It is, it's a disgrace for a landlord to let that happen, how can you let that happen to your property? Uh, yeah.
Then this happened, another another person property. They started tearing up the floor and all the cockroaches went out, so it was somebody else's house and then they.
People moved out before the crew here came in, oh my God, it was unreal, I told Black, I said, they come to my house, me and you really got.
Uh, we had two situations, along with the, we had to hire CHM. Escavators, the schools, elementary school, the sewer backed up and um. We discovered that even Mark did not know that we had uh pressure relief valves on that force main. That hadn't been replaced since or since they were installed in seventy seven, so we had to replace those and uh. Still couldn't uh get the sewer to flow and kind of find it, long story short, it was legos, rags. Anything that should not be in the sewer was in the sewer out there, so uh I talked to Lori about that, get, we need to get uh some, there was almost. Right at ten thousand dollars for CHM to replace all the valves and fix it. And uh the school called, wanted us to, they had two thousand dollar bill because they had to. Have all their sewer, you know, hauled out to the plant, then once they found out how much we had to pay, they were like. We'll take care of the two thousand, but they were, they were, they didn't ask for it no more, but we do the appropriate play for that and uh. IDAM is wanting us to get the backwash ponds uh out of the water plant cleaned out. And basically where they come in, they scrape scrape it all down to uh to the hard pan, haul it out, and let it dry, they get tested with little things or whatever, but. That's eighty five hundred dollars, uh which sounds like a lot, but if we do it in the project, um I think it was. Roughly ninety thousand dollars, they wanted another fourteen test. Uh, so it's either, you know, we we pay ninety thousand dollars out of that, or we just pay it out of our pocket and go spend eighty five hundred. Uh, cause we're allowed to take it out to the sewer plant and store if it dries out, if that's not that we're playing with fire, we just can't wait to fly it till it dry. They just test it for iron, they'll make sure it's uh, or it's gone, stuff like that before we play the fire. But IDAM says they will, they will.
So. You gotta make a motion for the appropriation for.
Yeah, anything, I think at this point, anything over five thousand, we have to have council approval, so that's why we want council approval on both the ten thousand and then for this eighty five hundred.
Make a motion for both.
I'll second that, all in favor, aye. The base, the school is saying how they're gonna keep the legos out? They let the kids in the bathroom with legos, that's impressive.
So we discovered uh and uh justify the money a little more on the uh on pressure relief valves that we didn't. Mark even though it was there, uh these are ones that we can take, mark once a year, clean them. Put them back together, and that way, they're supposed to last a lot longer, which I feel like, voters been there since seventy seven, I think they got their bodies worked.
Yeah.
Had we known they were there, maybe we could have done something earlier. What it does uh on force main, you got everywhere there's a high spot, the blowers try to release it out, once that air. Gets in there, it'll actually airlock, that's why the sewer will flow. But that lets that air out, so the water needs to go, or they they just malfunction, it's a perfect, that's why it's all back. This fixes the working down there.
Uh, anything outstanding?
That's all I got.
I think everybody here would like to see your town have a higher rate of homeownership. I think it's something everybody would be on board with, I think it would be a good idea if we offered. Free water for a year, anyone who walked in with a deed to have the water turned on, their name, and not sewer, just water, they'd get a bill that showed both what would be and what for paying. But encourage homeownership that way, instead of some of the stuff we're doing to try to restrict rental from the opposite end, let's try to push homeownership, let's try to get more people to wanna live here. Not just be landlords, properties here and they live somewhere else, we have people who live here that have their own properties. But people who live outside of here, I think is one of the biggest issues, but if someone was to move in a home, the last tenant, last person living there was a tenant. And now that's a home law, we got homeowners, that's what we want to convert as many of those we can in this town, I assume everybody wants to.
It's no idea.
It would be a very, we're giving away something we already have, and it's it's not something that's real costly, can't, right? And it's something I assume everyone wants to encourage, it's a higher rate of homeownership. Well, you have a rental, well, I, you know, like you taking care, most people live here, you take care of the rentals, but people who live outside this area. Care less because they're not looking at or dealing with them or talking to neighbors and saying, hey, I've got, probably got next to them, I'm having trouble with that guy, you know? So.
Could be considerable cost.
I think we'd have.
Well, it could be, you know, it 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 could be, it could be a a minimal two thousand dollar cost, but um, you know, they 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 could fill pools for a living out of it too. um, you know, that they, they could fill pools for a living out of it too and then.
We had ten new homes and ten people walked in here with deeds and got water turned on, they, hallelujah, we have ten new customers too, right?
Zurka, where's that at? That's, that's all the water, you ever get that all the time in here?
I would be curious. We have this APAR, ARP funding that we have and I, I already mentioned something to Harry that um, they suggest to put a committee together to explore how you can better meet the residents in the community. My thought would be maybe there's some kind of grant or something we could create for free water to homeowners or come up with some guy, kind of guideline that would still reflect promoting safety during the COVID nineteen pandemic with our ARP funding, so. It's an idea, there's.
Imagine if once a month, somebody come in here and took over ownership of a home that previously had a tenant. That would be a fantastic break and that would be twelve years. But wouldn't be a lot, but that'd be fantastic.
It would be great if, if we had things for sale. Nothing's for sale.
Generally, if they live there, that's the case, but not always, but generally.
Oh, we have a committee. That'd be our third committee we need to form. We gotta have people in Westport committees.
Ownership rate was under sixty percent?
It has improved. When we last calculated, we had said rental um was over half of the percentage and that was in two thousand nineteen. I recently did a mapping and tried to figure out rentals versus homeownership. And I don't have a percentage yet, but it has improved greatly. A lot of the rental homes at that point have sold and are in ownership at this point. Um, there's clearly particular land, um landlords in town that own a considerable amount of the rentals that are what I would call slum lords, unfortunately. Uh, we've got one that they own twelve properties here in town and, you know, they're not replacing the customer's water heaters. They're not fixing the sewer problems. That person does not live in town. That's the problem. Um, we have a couple others that are right in that same category. That's why we've kind of been looking at these rental inspections because those particular people are not willing to sell their homes. The issue is they're buying the homes that are going up for sale. One of those particular landlords has bought three houses in the last year. So that's a, that's a concern that when houses are opening, they're buying them and they're continuing to rent them to lower income that can't afford to fight for themselves.
Free water, it was a rent property previously, at least. I'm not saying any property transact, I wouldn't say that. Just if it had previously been a tenant, you know, they were converting it to the national averages to third, third homeowners rate. And we're about fifty, up just about fifty percent, that's not bad.
Yeah, it's not good, but it's not as bad as it was two years ago. So I hope that, you know, we're headed in the right direction. But also the homes have to be available. Right now, there's hardly anything for sale. You know, people are all the time looking for places to buy and Westport has one or two here and there, but it's, we need more development. It would be nice to find some.
Makes it hard is a lot of the, and, and you probably already know, most of them are two bed, one bath and just people aren't jumping.
If a street owner can tell his buyer that he can have free water for a year, you know, that's another incentive that move to Westport. You know, build those houses in Greensburg like fast, I built, we need some of that here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can't buy no property around here.
But we are making some preparations of, of making sure that we have the foundations of infrastructure with, with our wastewater treatment in, in, in our water to support it, number one. So, uh, we've got those things coming along.
Always, I would just think like we can't move fast enough, like we're gonna go back through all our ordinances and, and, and look at that and update this and do this, do this, then we'll, right now we're working on this water plant project. Oh my goodness, and then what was the problem like that?
Thanks for fixing that leak down there on Old Watch Street that hit.
We just had to give it time to show itself. We tried to fix.
All summer, I thought, hey, they're gonna fix this thing. Thanks for fixing my ditch down there.
That's two deposits, that's great.
Yeah, for me too, it's a sweep west town.
Barbie, anything? You look like you're getting tired, Lori.
Five o'clock comes very early.
You guys could have laughed if you, you didn't have to stay in, you didn't want to board.
We reeled them right in.
Oh, we reeled them in? That's got me. Thanks for coming. I know what goes on here in Westport. Some things going on, what we have to deal with, so that's, it's always good to have these bases and always welcome to come out. Got any concerns? It's a forum to discuss and.
I got one more thing.
You got one more?
Um, we just need to do an official contract with Alex, so this is.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
I'll give you the guns for that.